Dan, you want the hammer?
Ding ding.
No, I'm not. That would be John would have to win this.
Yeah, she does the planning commission.
Planning commission?
Chris, I've been substituted down at Wabashaw for Sundays, one more to go, so I'm a little bit fried right now.
Okay, here's excuses. Come on, step it up.
Well, you weren't at Wabashaw. Hey. How was it? Did you recognize anybody or?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
I had two items I wanted to bring down on there.
The consent agenda?
Yeah.
We'll do that when we get to consent.
Okay.
Hold those down.
Okay. Dart, you got that, Sarah? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than thirty minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, and pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall have, shall not address topics that are subject to a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. First up, we have, I'm not going to say it right, Jeff Kelchik?
Good evening. I will apologize upfront for not being part of the potential data center discussions, and I should have been. As a little bit of background, I have been in IT now for, on the order of forty years, most of those in an infrastructure capacity. And I have concerns about what is coming forward for this proposed data center. What I can speak to with a fair degree of confidence is that, in specific reference to the jobs prediction, I do not expect any of those jobs to come through except for a few facilities maintenance type of jobs. In short, the high-quality jobs that are being referred to, network administrators, system administrators, once the load-in is complete, those jobs will not be here. Beyond that, I'll leave it to the experts to talk about the water issues, although, obviously, that's a major concern. I don't think power or telecom is as big of an issue. But I do have significant questions about the way that this has been approached.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Tim, Deemer?
Can I go last?
Sure. Um, Bruce?
Tildequist.
Tildequist?
Well, this is about the data circuit, or data, data center, and I'm not sure too much, I haven't heard too much about it or anything, but Farmington was, they purchased the Farmington Golf Course, and it's been standing empty for a couple of years, so nothing's happening there. And I'm kind of concerned about that tax revenue off of this. Nothing's going to be taken or received for the Cannon Falls High School, since it's over in Dakota County. And just a suggestion, maybe, that before you vote on annexing it, asking Dakota County if they would give up their land from eighty-six going south to eighty-eight, and from how's auction thing over to Highway fifty-two. You know, then it would be out of Dakota County, and Randolph would be getting all the tax money. And, and then, I don't know, we're going to talk about the water situation, and I guess there's supposed to be a lot of noise, and they want to build a lot of houses out there, but I don't know if a lot of people are going to like to live next to all that noise, so. That's, that's my problem or complaint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Uh, Tim Deemer, Cannon Falls. I'm. I'm a little reluctant and, I don't know what, apprehensive about speaking on certain issues that have, that I've had to, I don't know, endure, put up with through a few staff members at our Cannon Falls Library. I went to their board meeting last Monday. Spoke briefly on it, just my issue, and I'm, we'll be submitting a letter very soon about a incident that happened earlier in July, like a month ago, less than a month ago, and in terms of how I was spoken to by the director there, by Nicole Miller, and and things that have happened there years ago, even, three, four years ago, and following their, their library policy manual, and how just, just things in there that don't, didn't, they didn't adhere to or follow, and so, and I'm also not as big of a deal, but I'm, I'm wondering if they're, to bring up, if they have a dress code, and I know you, I have to go to them, I believe, in order to, for something to, before the library board trustees to, and for it to go through that. Address them first, I believe. You guys are kind of outside of that, whatever, they, they got the, the say in it, so. Hopefully, I'll get an answer in, after I, before the end of the week, I'll, I'll give them a written grievance about this issue, but it, it just needs to be addressed, and I'm hoping the director will have enough sense and just talk. She, she basically told me I was abusing the library, that I had to leave, so pretty much, I couldn't say anything to her. So, from her telling me, it'd be a good idea if you left right now, it's kind of like telling me to shut up, and then she started out by saying that, Tim, you know everything, and I don't know who, if any of us know everything, but that's where her exact words, "Tim, you know everything," and so I'm hoping this will be dealt with cordially and professionally. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, next item we have is a public hearing. Resolution twenty-eight seventeen certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Do, do I, do you want me just to open it, or do you need to say anything? Just open it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, so open a public hearing if anybody would like to come forward and speak regarding the unpaid utility charges being collected with taxes?
The time is six forty-one.
Okay, second call, if anybody would like to come forward? Okay, that closes that. Do we need to approve that, or is it just a public hearing? Okay. So I'll take a motion to adopt the resolution, number twenty-eight seventeen certifying unpaid utility.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, so Chad Johnson on the motion, and Nobak on the second?
Yep. Okay, and then that brings us to the Cannon Falls Area Historical Society presentation. Amy?
Micah? Oh, very good, okay. Good evening, I'm Amy Donbeck. I'm a lifelong resident and longtime Cannon Falls Schools educator, two of my students in front of me, and for the past two years, the president of the Cannon Falls Area Historical Society Museum. And on behalf of the Historical Society, I want to thank the city of Cannon Falls for their life, longtime support and partnership, which actually goes back to the nineteen eighties, when the Historical Society was founded. The last two years have been very interesting for us, because we made some key transitions. Steve Dablo was a longtime board president and promoted our local history with our story videos, and collected those interviews, and also did a variety of work on, a various amount of work on the mural project, which was amazing. Zach Werum was our longtime director, he was there for thirteen years, I believe, and was an amazing steward. He preserved and chaired our history as well with History Minutes on YouTube, directing small and large group tours. And he was a guardian and a maven for all that we have in our collection. And he's very a big asset in helping us understand what was actually in that museum, as brand-new people to the board were still uncovering and discovering, so. But I want to take a minute and also give you a little history lesson, and I want to thank five specific teachers, who you may have seen on the post office wall, but without their foresight and dedication, our local history and community library may not exist. They are Nellie Olson, Agnes Swanson, Maud Harder, Louise McLean, and Mary McKinley. And in nineteen oh-three, they started the Tuesday Club, which was a literary and a current event club for adults to continue their learning. Most people at that time went to school through maybe fourth grade, but they started this as a, quote, "means of mutual improvement" for adults in the community, and what I would call a live version of the Discovery Channel or the History Channels. They chose a theme to follow each year, and they would, if you went to meetings, you would learn about a different culture, the geography of a world region, current issues, and you would even explore current and classic literature. The Tuesday Club became a force for the changes, as the town grew through the century, as they grew through the century, and they went on to found our first public library, with no government support at all at first, and eventually took over the eighteen eighty-eight Fire Hall that we currently occupy in the museum. And they made that the first public library. And when the library moved, or under the umbrella of the city and under the city government, they actually moved into the City Hall Building, which is currently, was a former grocery store, but currently in the location where the current library is. In the eighties, when that Fire Hall became vacant again, they decided that we needed a history society. And so they actually founded the Cannon Falls Historical Society, and we have been for some, what one people, some people would call the community's attic. And we have a lot of local history artifacts that make our museum significant and important in preserving and sharing our heritage, so. We have bylaws, and we've had a great relationship with the city over the years in supporting our goals and initiatives, but what we haven't had is a strategic plan, and that is the document that you have in front of you, for what we are, why we are, and what we hope endures through our organization. With the changes in city leadership, with the administration, and even the, on the council, and with the hiring of Jody Shoblam, our director, and our new board, which includes Al Broine, Bill Erickson, Ray Rapp, Matthew Stelter, Joe Twiliger, myself, and along with the previous board member and previous vice president Keith Holt, we have created a strategic plan, and we basically have defined what we need and what we want for the organization over the next five years. We've also asked for clarification about the administrative offices. There's very little documentation that we had about that, which is also known as the White House, lowercase w, lowercase h. And we need to define what its original purpose was, and what the parameters of the purchase was, so. This has been a very busy year for us, and a productive one, and what you see in that strategic plan has been a very mindful process, in which I kind of used my teacher skills and gave my board members some homework, created collaborative conversations, and this is what we came up with, which is our needs, our wants, and our dreams for the organization. And we also did what we do a lot in strategic planning, which is a SWOT analysis, and defined what we thought are our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to our organization. As I said, with Neil Johnson's retirement and John Radermacher coming on as city administrator, we really felt it was important to kind of really clarify what is our relationship, and that is why we've asked for a cooperative agreement and some real clear parameters of what the administrative office, the White House, looks like, so. So in our plan, you'll see a mission vision, a description of our why, you'll see our core values. We want to be stewards of our collection in the buildings, we want to communicate local history. If you don't know, a lot of what we're doing is we're trying to get that local history out again, so if you read The Beacon, you've probably seen those history stories. The other one is, we've been grant agents, and we have a history of Mineral Springs book coming out, if you don't know about that. Cannon Falls was actually a really pivotal player in curing tuberculosis for the first time, and actually finding a way to kind of treat that. And the guy that went from here, Mineral Springs, went to Chicago, and that's kind of spread around the world. We believe that education and cooperation is also important, and that's why we want to collaborate more with local organizations, like the chamber, the library, and the schools, to create more interest in local history. One of the things I'm really proud of is that our local student newspaper at the high school is actually doing Chronicles of Cannon Falls History Story on a regular basis, so that's been kind of a good thing. But I'd also like to take the time right now and just thank our city administrator, Ms. Radermacher. Your knowledge and understanding of the role that historic buildings, historic organizations, and the importance of nonprofits that they play in framing a community's culture and story has been pivotal in our process. And we actually asked John to meet with us very early on, when he was hired, and he made, made a plan for a date when he could, after taking in everything else, came in and listened to our, guided us kind of in our, our process of this cooperative agreement, what that might look like. But he even listened in, even when we weren't done with the strategic plan, just kind of gave us some ideas or whatever. And the cooperative agreement that you see with the, between the city and our nonprofit, along with that parameter for what the White House building looks like, that all came about because of the, the work that, that John did. We, we'll take credit for the strategic plan, but John was really pivotal in that, and I want to thank him for that. That has been really a great asset to us, so. We have ratified both documents, but one of the things that you should know is, we have an old building that has not been taken care of. And it was in fair condition in the eighties, when it was taken on as the Historical Society. It has been duct tape glued together, patched about as much as it can be patched. And we are taking on some projects ourselves, we replaced a furnace, we are in the process of looking at like our window situation. We've had Public Works come, Jeds come, knows that the roof is barely holding it together, along with, you know, we have some outside work to do. This process has helped us kind of really define that role, but we know that we are actually in the city's building. We just want some guidance moving forward about what we can do together, what we're responsible for. And, yeah, that's kind of why I'm here tonight, and again, I just want to thank John and my board or whatever for helping to kind of, through this process, so. I'll take any questions or any comments or?
I guess the, you want to keep that building, and, right, and so,
Yeah.
is there any plans in the future to ever expand onto it? Because I know you have a lot of stuff, and storage and stuff, too.
Correct. So one of the things that happened was the White House, which is to the west of the building, was purchased with the help and support of the city of Cannon Falls to be administrative office. We have artifacts and things over there. There's also a very big garage in the back that, right now, is helping us out. This is, one of the things that we're actually looking at is the actual museum property itself. I don't know if we can add on, the problem is, it's a historic building, and it's on the National Register. So you almost have to give up, you know, your kidney in order to be able to do just about anything.
Absolutely.
Right? So, so the reality is, is that we need help. We need some guidance. We're going to do what we can. We have some urgent things that need to be taken care of, that we know that we're going to need some help from the city with, but absolutely. Our Fire Hall is a treasure. It's one of the things that I think draws a lot of people in, is that it is a unique space. It's eighteen eighty-eight Fire Hall, which is kind of pretty crazy that it's still standing, so, yeah. Good, thank you for the question.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll just state, like, what we, what's addressed tonight is on the agenda later in the meeting, so we do, what we're, what Amy spoke to was the management agreement that we have on there, and then the resolution afterwards is kind of our, our path for what we could do with the house if it were no longer to be deemed needed or necessary, and how, if it were sold, we honor the donations that were made for, for the purchase. So, just want to add a little context, I did a lot of research on what happened at the time of that decision, so that was back in twenty eighteen. Steve Dablo, at the time, came to the city, requested the city to actually buy the house. The intent at the time was that the city would buy it, the city would still own it, and the museum would be able to use it, or the Historical Society would be able to use it for, for the administrative offices and storage. So, in part of that conversation, it was, Steve did say that if the need for that building, you know, ceased, and they didn't need it anymore after ten years, the city could sell it, so. I just, that was a big part in, in addressing this, is we didn't want to then, you know, move on to doing something that would, you know, fly in the face or contradict the intent of those people that did donate. I mean, and the donations were pretty significant. We did, we, the city to date has received a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that, for that purchase. The total purchase was a hundred and eighty-six thousand, so they haven't yet fully met their, their pledges for all of that, but we talk about if, if the building were to be utilized, you know, how we would distribute that if we did sell above the hundred and sixty. Now, there was a council member that asked a question, and I think it's a very valid one, we haven't, we didn't discuss it, because it wasn't really, didn't really cross my mind that that would be possible, but what if it does sell for under a hundred and sixty? You know, how would the, how would we utilize the proceeds, but that can be discussed later on, too.
Yeah, and I just want to also clarify, we're not opposed to fundraising. We just know there's some things we have to take care of this year, that's in our twenty twenty-five plan, and fundraising and exploring those kind of options are things that we're looking at for the future or whatever, so. Thank you, though, for your ongoing support, because that really helps us survive. And hopefully, in the next couple of years, we'll have a better handle on where we're at, and we'll know that the building is going to keep standing. And, yeah, so, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion, and resolution is council business. A, just incorrect claims, accounting period ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. B, meeting minutes for July fifteen, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. C, meeting minutes for July twenty-one, twenty-five city council planning commission work session. D, approve replacement of raw wastewater pump. E, approve active transportation planning demonstration project. F, approve purchase of twenty twenty-six plow truck. G, approve disposal of e-waste. H, approve professional services agreement with WHKS for the Headworks Engineers Report. I, approve final report of alternative urban area-wide review. J, introduction and first reading of ordinance four oh-nine in ordinance amending city code chapter one fifty-two to fifty-eight related to parking stall, aisle, and driveway design and design standards. K, introduction and first reading of ordinance four-ten in ordinance amending city code chapter one fifty-two related to zoning. L, approve engagement letter with Freiberger Law. M, resolution twenty-eight nineteen, accepting a fifteen hundred dollar donation from one OK for the fire department. N, resolution twenty-eight twenty, approving final plat and final PUD plan for Hardwood Estates Third Division subdivision. And O, resolution twenty-eight twenty-one, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. Is there any that anyone would like to pull down?
Uh, G, the e-waste, and E for the active transportation thing, just got a questions.
Okay.
And I will pull down item I and item K.
Okay, so G will become B, council business. E will become C, council business. I will come D, council business, and K will be E, council business. Okay, with pulling those down, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So first by Johnson and second by Johnson. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, council business. A, the Cannon Area Historical Society. One and two, John.
All right. Thank you. So, as we heard from Amy, and we have before us tonight is a, a management agreement between the city of Cannon Falls and the Cannon Falls the city of Cannon Falls and the Cannon Falls Area Historical Society. In my previous cities, we had a number of different city-owned buildings that had community nonprofits that were operating out of them. Examples being like we had a zoo in Little Falls that was operated by the Friends of the Pine Grove Zoo. We had historic mansions that were used as lodging and retreat spaces as well as event sites and different things that were managed and run by the Friends of Linden Hill. So within those spaces, we generally had management agreements similar to this. So think of a management agreement similar to a lease in which we are entrusting in the nonprofit to maintain this the space for us, of which then they can utilize in the lease payment is essentially them utilizing the space to generate revenue either through, you know, fees or donations. But in that regard, we try to spell out and list the services that and things that we expect for them to provide and then understanding like what the responsibility is and commitment of the of the city will be for for those items. So that was the nature of why we created this. Prior to that, the arrangement, it is nothing to do with the arrangement not working or the arrangement having any issues, but in light of some major capital improvements and responsibilities that we have for the for the site that were that Amy alluded to, it is something that we really wanted to, I felt was important in my conversation with them and their board as well felt important to, you know, put this into an agreement. Contingent or well, I guess in addition to that, and when I met with their board, we discussed the the use of the White House and the donations for that. And it was a concern of theirs that they wanted to ensure the donations that went for that, the purchase of that property. While, you know, to date, they have, I think the initial intent was they had 20 years to pay that, so they still have time. There was no, you know, bone or mandate that they had to have it paid off by a certain time other than by 20 years, so no specific dollar amounts per year. But they didn't want if the city were to take that and then sell the property or deem it not needed anymore for their use, they wanted to make sure that the contributions that were made to that would would be reinvested in a way into the into the site. So that's that's the importance of the second item with the resolution that will kind of spell out the plan for how the the city would use the property. And in light of what I what I mentioned before, we talked about, it talks about what it would be for the sale up to 160 and then things beyond, you know, so that 160 would go back. If it didn't sell for for the 160, I guess the question would become, do we still kind of hold the pledges of the Historical Society to their 2018 agreement? Do we still hold them to account for that or utilize all the proceeds that we would generate from the sale of that house back into the into the site? In our conversations, and then I want to echo what Amy said, they have, they're very much in support of donating, making contributions, paying for various things even beyond like the minimum maintenance items. This isn't a question of they want to, you know, they want to forego this obligation and not have to make any more contributions to the facilities. That's not true. They definitely do. They just want to make sure that these past donations are still utilized for, you know, something in close to what the intent was as well as, you know, spelling out the way for, you know, the city to be able to then utilize anything that would be above and beyond that. So I did have, it was mentioned to me by a realtor in town, and they believed the property could sell for, you know, this is a few months ago, and markets vary, can vary, but they did believe that that property would sell for over 200,000. So it's, you know, that was why I guess it never really occurred to me to to think about what it would sell if it sold for less than that.
They would be selling it through a normal means of selling, not just like a private party sale. It'd be listed.
Yeah, and that would be up to the city to determine on how to engage on that work if we if we did want to engage with a realtor to do that sale, you know, knowing that then, you know, net proceeds of the sale definitely are diminished, but they are marketing to a large.
I don't see any problem with it being if we if it was listed. Houses in town just don't go that cheap. Lots are going for 50,000. But I can see private sale, like, oh, okay.
Yeah, and I just want to emphasize, like, right now, that's not what we're asking. The resolution isn't saying like today or tomorrow or this month or this year, we're putting the house on the market. It's just saying that if we ever chose to, it would be because it was determined between both the Historical Society Board that they don't, didn't need it anymore and that the city in terms of the best use of the property, we don't need it as for anything else. And therefore, selling it is in the best interest in using the proceeds from the sale to reinvest up to a certain level for the museum and Historical Society, you know, managed facilities, you know, in case, say, 10 years from now, there's another building that that they're, you know, helping us to manage, we could still use it for that, like as an example. So each item should receive an approval separate from one another, but know that in our conversations, the expectation with the board was we would have, we would have this resolution on there so that they would know the city is committed to preserving the donations that were made back in from 2018 until recently.
Okay. It's really just formalizing what we all kind of understood. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the management agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jepson, second by Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then item two, I will take a motion to approve resolution 2818.
Motion.
Motion by Johnson, second by Jepson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Item B, approve disposal of e-waste.
All right. So I know this is usually common practice with the e-waste. I just have a question for, do we take the hard drives out of the computer before we give it to them and destroy them? Or do we give it to them, they destroy it, and then give us like a documentation of destruction?
Yeah, they would provide a documentation of destruction. However, any hard drive that leaves the police department, we actually pull and drill them out.
Good. That's, I just wanted to check on that.
So I've got a box with, I don't know, 30 or 40 hard drives in it. Burned up a bunch of drill bits. They didn't work yours, Jed. I went on bottom. But yeah, so we we destroy all of our hard drives just because of the data to ensure that there is no possibility of it going out. Any of the e-waste, otherwise, if onsite our IT vendor takes a unit, they do the destruction on it and then certify that back. This is just, we've got so much stuff from many, many years of just being in storage. This opportunity came along and it was just a good way to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. Council business C.
We need to approve that.
We got a vote on that.
Oh, oh, sorry. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion it. I brought it down, so, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Chad Johnson.
Yes. Okay, council business C. Approve active transportation planning demonstration project.
Yeah, so my question with this one, it said it was temporary, temporary structures or I just don't understand all that.
So what they're going to do is they're essentially going to put down tape for the lines. We'll tape over the lines. We may have to paint over some of the lines. And then there will be glue on what they call delineators, the poles for the barrier in the middle, but it is all temporary. It is, it is, it'll be taken out this fall or late this fall before we plow. So it is the only thing that MINDOT would approve.
I was just wondering if we're going to have cones.
No, 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 these will be glued down to the to the road.
All right, well, that's, like I said, just questions, so. I'll motion to approve that since I brought it down.
All right, so a motion by Chad and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Council business D is approve final report of alternative urban area-wide review.
And I, you know, it just, obviously, we've been doing that for a very long time, and I understand that. And reading through some of the comments and everything and realizing so much of it is like, well, we'll determine that in the future. We'll determine that in the future. I guess I wish we had actually taken the time to do that more intensive study with the environmental impact statement, which I know is too late to do, but I just wanted it to be known that I'm a little bit, I'm not completely satisfied with the in-depthness of the alternate one.
There anything in particular you wish there would have been studied?
I, it's a 400 and some page document. So I mean, I, it looks like, you know, on that other one, we might have been able to actually, you know, say you've got to have green roofs or you got to do this to mitigate the heat that's going to be generated or potentially generated from such a project.
So I think council member Johnson, it, as we get into the next level of conversations with with Tract and and the data centers, so the land use plan, the development agreement, you know, and where we, you know, the process that we'll we'll be playing out with that, I think there's opportunities for those conversations to have to, you know, to ask for and try to incorporate, you know, strategies that will help, you know, mitigate impacts in their in their design and operation. So I, you know, notably, yes, it's not specified specifically in the AAR that this is exactly how the building is going to be constructed. Just as, you know, kind of a guidance, the AAR isn't specifically, you know, it's looking at options, multiple options of the project, and it's kind of saying, are these feasible or not? With, and I guess the results of it are, they are feasible, and there are mitigation factors or things that need to be further studied. So, you know, as we then progress to ultimately getting to the point of approving something, then, you know, we can take those things into consideration and incorporate them into the into the final approvals. So I think there is room for that, that we have, we have coming up. Maybe not in the very immediate time, just due to the way the developer plan is for that for some things, but there certainly is for the long, long term when we get to the point where an end user is talking about, you know, building design and all those final approvals, then I think there's, there's very much room for that.
Any good, Diane?
I, I just said what I need to say.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the final report of alternative urban area review?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ryan, second by Novak. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oppose. I'll vote no.
Sorry. Okay.
I like to be a pain.
So four nays and, or sorry, four approves, one nay by Diane Johnson. Okay. And then council business E. Introduction and first reading of ordinance 410 in ordinance amending city code chapter 152 related to zoning.
And I think it's hard to look at that from the agenda, but that is relating to changing our zoning, a text amendment to allow data centers within our I-2 zoning. And first thing I will say is our staff has done an incredible job, tons and tons of hard work, going through all of this stuff and doing research and everything else, and my hat's off to them. Data centers, beginning to remind me of the Asian KARP. Big, ugly, powerful, and basically, if left unchecked, they devour anything and everything in their path. And yeah, it would be great, and I've talked to a lot of folks and, you know, it'd be great to have the extra tax dollars. I certainly am not denying that money is money, and it's always wonderful. I know Bruce said it won't go to our high school, Cannon Falls, or to our schools. And that's, and we have looked at everything, and there's nothing to be done about that. It's in Randolph School District, and that's where it stays. If we make this an exceptional use within our city code, yes, that means it opens the door to have a particular data center. It doesn't really give us the option to say, one data center is not, two we don't want. If you, you can't say, oh, we'll have two beauty parlors, but we're not going to allow a third. Once it's allowed as a conditional use, it can't be limited to the number. We can't, or it appeared that we can't put a restriction to say, if there is a code thing to say we allow data centers, we can't limit it to say, but no crypto mining, from what I understand, correct? Or that appears to be a limitation.
That, yeah.
That, you know, we don't know that for sure. It's both ways, but, you know, there's very good possibility we can't say no to it. And I think somebody else brought up, you know, there are going to be some new jobs. As we know, there's probably not going to be houses for them to live in if they are here in the community. And if they're not living here, they're probably not going to support our businesses and the local shops downtown. Our town, and we keep publicizing this in all of our brochures, you know, Cannon Falls, come, all this recreational stuff, it's got the small-town charm, we've got incredible places to eat, we're a food hub. Do we really want to impose upon that series of 80-foot-tall warehouse-looking buildings, maybe up to 10 of them, that look like overgrown shoeboxes? Do we want to become Cannon Falls, yeah, don't they have all those big data centers hanging out there? You know, it's not like your ideal technology park that you see out in San Francisco where you've got little trees growing and little buildings. You know, these are big, basic warehouses, housing, computer-type stuff and generating tons and tons of heat. We also, and it took me a while to figure it out, but, you know, we're working with the potential, the developer on this proposed project, this is not the end user. So we can talk about all of like, oh, yeah, we can do this, we can do that. We don't know because we don't know who is going to be the actual user down the road. And so I guess, as I say again, my appreciation to everybody who has done so much work on this project, and I'm only one voice, but bottom line is, I'm not going to sell my soul to the Asian KARP in turn for some tax money. So that's all.
Can I ask a question quick or just a clarification? The way that we developed that language for zoning, did it not state in there about, you know, we need the resources available to allow conditional use of a new applicant? So in a sense, right now, we, we do have the available water for what's being proposed, and we found that out through our water study. It would appear to me that that would be a limitation of another one coming down the pike, I guess.
If they can get permission to drill a new well and have more water, and if the electric company says they've got, I mean, you know, they've got to go through that, but if they do it the right way, it doesn't mean we couldn't have a second one or a third one or a fourth. I mean, there's nothing that in our code that would allow us to stop that.
I, I would say that the intent in what we drafted for this ordinance change is to ensure that the city has as much control as possible on the very forefront of an application for a data center as we can. And noting, you know, the needs for resources, the use of utilities, the availability for water, the ability for the city to support those, that use would have to be available or considered. the availability for water, the ability for the city to support those, that use would have to be available or considered in terms of that first blush of an approval for a conditional use permit for them to be able to do this. And the city, at that time, if it has factual evidence to not support that use, then it could, you know, the determination could be made to deny it. You know, in terms of, there's, I, I think, a lot of other provisions and things that limit their ability, so they would not, without permission from the city, be able to drill their own well if they're in, within the city limits and in a service area of which we have available. That would, you know, be a limiting factor. So adding to their, their water supply and use is not something that, unless we also authorize that to happen and have good reason and justification for doing so, we wouldn't be able to do. I know that this is a conversation, and this ordinance is, you know, relatively independent of what we've been discussing in the AAR that was just approved for Tract. But there is a lot of elements of this that we, you know, we are anticipating based on what they've sent us in terms of, of information and what they're, they've, you know, indicated that they're, they're going to be asking for. So we use that as, to help us and guide us in making sure that we had the proper provisions in place to make sure that if this one were to be approved, that we would still have a lot of things in place to justify the next one and have to come through, you know, a very rigorous process to make sure that that was, in the council's opinion, the decision-maker's opinion, something that would going to serve the best, best needs of the community. I don't think this ordinance, in my opinion, opens the door, floodgates, for any and all data centers forever and always without, you know, the authority approval of the council. I believe very strongly that this supports the city's authority to regulate this and its use. I want to take two more comments of the, you know, the crypto mining piece that is, you know, certainly something that we talked about. You know, the utilization of, of something that eventually, if, if permitted and they meet all of the other regulations, whether or not they're, they're doing crypto mining is something that we would have a hard time in terms of regulatory enforcement, but that, I will, you know, assure that I heard today in a conversation with Tract that they're discussing of how, ways that they could put that into their PUD plan as a not, you know, not allow, not a primary use of, of their facility. So, you know, that said, they still, you know, it's, it's making sure they meet all of the other criterias of which would be set in order to gain approval, and if those things are met and, and that isn't a primary use, somewhere, somebody is doing a secondary use of it, it might be hard to, to regulate, but it isn't, it isn't going to change the external dynamic of, of how that building is operated. So the noise it's generating, the heat it's generating, the, the design and use of that facility, all would still have to meet our, the, whatever it is that would come to the final approval. You commented briefly on housing. You know, we, housing has been a very, an issue of importance for this community for a very long time in that not a lot of houses were built, and we are in a current situation in which, I'm not saying that this project is necessary to, to keep this trend going, but we approved tonight the final plats for Hardwood Estates. So I do think it is worth noting that a lot of things are being done on housing to, you know, create opportunities for housing and that, you know, hopefully, future development things can continue to support that. We also have Timber Ridge, another development with a lot of available lots for housing. So I think it, I don't want to make it seem that we don't have available housing to be constructed. That, that I think is something that we do have in this community and is, is available. The, the affordability of that, the construction of housing costs, all of those things, various different factors, lots of other things in play for it, but specifically, there are lots to be able to build houses on. And I want to just thank you for, you know, bringing this down, because I would have asked you to do so anyways, because in that, I want to address to the council that in our conversation, there was with Tract, because as, as I said, they are providing guidance with this. This is still our city. I want to emphasize, we have been very much on the forefront of, these are the things we want to make sure are included. So we want to just provide a, a light request for an amendment that, that changes, or actually not changes, adds forwards, and at this point, it's the opinion of the city attorney and myself, that this doesn't materially change the ordinance, just provide some more clarity, so we aren't recommending that it be sent back to the Planning Commission for another public hearing. So if you may, I want to provide the two change, small changes. So under M, number one, the sentence starts, "public sanitary sewer", there would be the insertion of "public" or-
Could you tell me where you are again?
Yep, sorry. Item M, or section M, section, excuse me, section two, item M, number one, "public sanitary sewer, comma, water, comma, and storm sewer services", to add "public or private sanitary sewer, comma, water and stormwater services". There, in the, in the building design and plans, it is possible that there may be private service infrastructures that, that would be allowable. Then on the, you know, much further down, under the N statement, so "data center substation provided that", number two, the sentence starts, "all data center substations are located on the same site as the data center that it serves", the insertion would be, "all data center substations are located on the same or contiguous site as the data center that it serves". The purpose for that was in an instance in which the substation, which is very likely to be the case, is going to be on a separate parcel, and we don't want to designate, or we don't want to have the intent of a parcel being a separate, deemed as a separate site, that all of it would be in a contiguous site, but the parcel might be controlled by Dakota Electric for, you know, the major substation. That's, that's actually pretty common. You know, the substations are generally owned by the power companies. So those are the only two amendments that we, you know, we're, we're suggesting to be considered for change to this ordinance.
Sir, are you saying this should go back to Planning Commission or?
Saying it should, we, it is our opinion that it does not, we, we don't feel it needs to go back to Planning Commission for these changes, as they do not create a material change to the intent of the ordinance. They merely provide clarity.
Any other questions?
I know it's been brought up in the past, but the fines, and I think Diane called it the teeth, what if they do go over the water usage, and how do we regulate that versus like mine, where, you know, my tap water, the horror stories that you read on the internet?
We revoke their conditional use permit and, and sever their ability to use the property for a data center.
Okay.
And just in, in saying public or private, who regulates private? Is that the state?
There, yeah, so this was mainly in regard to storm sewer, and a lot of the campus potentially could be under, you know, not, not have public infrastructure within it. So we still are, we still are obligated through our MS4 permits, you know, any, any sort of water use, so DNR, you know, so those, those various authorities still apply. There, we still review them, but it is, it makes them allowable. So you could have a stormwater retention pond on, on site. It's not city-owned. It's not city-operated. It's not serving, you know, those, those pipes aren't coming back into, you know, the city's stormwater collection system, but there's an infiltration pond on-site that's doing its stormwater management purpose. It's private, but it serves the purpose, and it, you know, in this instance, will likely be a requirement because they're going to be disturbing more than an acre of, of land, you know, taking it from pervious to impervious. So-
That's including those tanks that we were talking, that they would have for the storage of their on-site where they've used? That's in, in excess of that?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, that's in, in theory. So say these things exist on the property, they would, they could be allowable. They would still need to meet all of our other conditions as we do final approvals to things, so that they function, but there isn't all wholly, it has to be public infrastructure for water, sewer, storm, stormwater.
Probably not a question for you, but I mean, I, I, the water that they use usually comes out pretty clean, and a reason I understand they don't put it back in is the back, bacteria could be in the water, and then that could do something with their systems. But is there a reason that internally, these data centers don't just have a way to recycle that water themselves back in? Like, when I make a PC at home, like water cooling, like, it goes through a pump, it gets cleaned, it-
And, and, yeah, I've, I've heard that, and I believe that there are, you know, the potential for recirculating recycling systems to be installed to, to this as, as well. I mean, in terms of what we're talking about with the ordinance, it's, it might not necessarily be the piece that we reflect today, but-
Yeah, it's on everyone's mind, and I know it's, probably the worst it's ever, ever will be is right now. They're using more than they ever will. I mean, the technology's very new for how they do these things, and it's changing all the time. So.
I just want to add on, back to Councilmember Johnson's questions, the, if they choose to do private storm sewer, for example, they're still regulated by their permitting process, and then we've worked in our condition number three that allows the city control through the conditional use permit to make sure that they're complying with all of those state agency requirements. So we've buttressed, they do have to comply, but we have that additional ability to impact the CUP if the city council were to determine they aren't complying in some respects. We've bolstered your enforcement with respect to that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? With that, I will take a motion to approve-
amended.
Yep.
You need to amend it first, or?
I was going to say it as I say it. So a motion to approve the Act of Transportation Planning Demonstration Project with the M1 amended?
The, no, the data center ordinance. It's an active transportation project.
Why did I go there? Sorry. I went to the E in the consent agenda, not E in the business, council business. I balked. Sorry. Okay. So Council Business E, introduction and first reading of ordinance 410 and ordinance amending city code chapter 152 related to zoning. I'll take a motion to approve with the amended section M1 and N2.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan?
Second.
Section, second by Nobak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay. And that moves us to reports. I don't see Maggie here. Does anybody else have an update? Did she share an update by chance? Planning Commission?
Pretty much, it was what was on the agenda.
Yes.
Data center and gravel driveways.
Okay, yeah, and Public Works was, everything was on the agenda too? Consent agenda? Library Board?
It was an interesting meeting. Mr. Tim was there. But what they dealt with is, is their assistant librarian did submit his resignation, and so they're in the process of hiring a new assistant librarian.
All right. And joint power, I believe that's Lisa, right? All right. Okay, so then we'll go around the room. Laura, do you have anything for us this evening?
I just, thank you for approving the final plat. That's exciting. So we'll, tomorrow, we'll get the bids online, or actually, Darren and his team will get the bids online. And anyway, so that'll be exciting, that we'll get Hardwood Estates hopefully digging in September, October. The other thing is that I did send out an email to all of you about, next week, there will be a meeting here in the council chambers. I believe it's on Wednesday, and it's for the results from a survey that maybe some of you even participated in for Southeast Minnesota for the assets and infrastructure. My, one of my colleagues from SITA will be releasing those results, and if you're able to join, there is a link that I sent in a follow-up email, if you could RSVP for that, but it might really be interesting to hear kind of like what the status is for, it's for communities with five, populations of 500 to, I believe, 3,000, or maybe it's 5,000, I think, actually. And anyway, just to kind of hear like what us and our neighbors in our region, kind of how we compare and what the status of that is. So Jada also sent it out to the Public Works team as well. So anyway, if you're able to join, that would be really great. Otherwise, the survey results will also be released after the presentations have been made. So, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Izzy?
Nothing for engineering.
Jed?
You guys see the sign out on a twenty right out here? They are going to start August 11th, milling and overlaying twenty from River Road here, going out of town. Just, that's going to cause a lot of disruptions, so just plan accordingly.
Then it's August 11th to-
About ten days, so.
All right. All right, thank you. Chief McCormick?
So tonight was National Night Out, Night to Unite. We had seven parties. So officers and lieutenant are out attending them, as well as fire department and our ambulance service. And I haven't gotten feedback yet because I've been in here, but I am assuming that it will be very similar to years in the past where the residents have a very good time interacting with the city staff. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sarah? Shelley?
Nothing from legal.
John?
I have some things. I just want to, I wanted to share an update with the council on the annexation process. We were hoping that initially, that that would be an item that we could have on the agenda tonight. However, we had a meeting today with the township, and that went really well. And I believe we have a tentative agreement on all of the terms within that, that annexation agreement. So an orderly annexation agreement for, for the parcel that will include 250 acres. So there, final, you know, we'll finalize those terms, but as those come in, we'll have that available, and that will go into the next council packet with, you know, explanation of, of what that means for, for the city. But I think for where we, we stand, it, it is, serves, effectively works really well for, for everybody involved. This morning, I was actually able to, to go on a tour for the Cannon Valley Trail. Noted, we have a joint powers agreement that is almost forty years in existence for the trail, and it is between us, the city of Red Wing, and Goodyear County. So we had the Goodyear County Administrator and our county commissioner, Brad Anderson, were a part of that, as well as the new city administrator in Red Wing, Chris Heineman. We got to ride along, actually rode the entire length of the, of the trail with Scott Repke, the trail manager, to kind of see everything and get a little bit more experience for, for the things that are going on, and just really, really cool, very scenic tour. So it's the first time that I've been able to see the, see the whole thing. So really, really great opportunity to, to do that. Last week, I was able to attend a Southeast League Municipalities meeting. We talked a lot about safety issues for, for city staff and elected officials. Have some, you know, certainly have some recommendations for, for things that we can, we can do in that regard, but just in- but just in, you know, in light of a lot of things that have happened in recent years, it is definitely much more prevalent on our minds. And I also was able to go to Winona last week for the CETA annual meeting, I got to see Laura speak on our housing projects here in town, was just very impressed and thoroughly excited about all the things that that organization is doing, and the capacity that they're adding with that organization, doing a lot of growth, and I think it is going to do really well to serve our community, not just with the work that Laura does, but the work that their team is able to do, and I think there's some great opportunities available to us moving forward. So I just am excited to have heard, you know, what they have coming and what they've been doing, and I think we're in a really good hands in that relationship, so I just wanted to echo that sentiment. And with that, I am finished.
Okay. Diane?
I just have to say, Friday night highlight of the week was the kids' summer camp theater thing, and Chris is famous, his nephew was Romeo, and the kids and the staff did an incredible job, so hats off to them.
I thought you were going to talk about the cannon cruise, the car cruise.
Well, after we got out of the play, we ended up there in the parking lot, and then out, of course, at Mill Street, so it was a marvelous evening all round.
Yeah, I heard there were 177 cars. Chad?
I guess I'll talk about the car cruise, I didn't get to attend it, but they did a good job putting it on video, and they've got music, and you can find it on the website, on YouTube, so if you're watching on YouTube, it's on there. It's about 20 minutes, it's worth it, so that's all I got.
All right. Ryan?
Nothing. Nothing. Yeah, uncle, uncle, yeah, I was not in the play, no, all good.
All right. All right, well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Diane, second by Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.